The.
Thank you. In rap minutes, what do you just look at them? And you further. All hearing anything on those. The agenda.
Should we dump the agenda?
I would.
Do you have a second on that?
But I I I'm trying to be very conservative, but um the traffic um the Department of Traffic Safety um grant thing has come through and we have our final numbers on that. And it is something that needs to be expedited because it has to be all spent and installed by um uh the conclusion, which is, I think sometime in September. Um so we wanted to, they asked and wanted to get a move on it, um so to speak. Um and I was didn't know whether there would, it ended up being a lengthier discussion. So if we could at least have a preliminary talk about this, um put on the agenda um as we do things uh.
Yeah, other right.
Yeah, okay. It's that Bureau of Highway Safety grant uh for the printers and the uh and the cruisers.
Two more things to add too, sorry. One is um uh the appointment of Gary Hill as a um in order to work under the uh sheriff's office. So essentially um.
He does some traffic stuff for them, so we we give him in courts, we give him a commission in order to be able to.
Of course, he does this call offer the commission and then um also to authorize the retirement change for the um deputies if you approve the contract.
A contract on the personal matters.
Yeah, and if we do that, then.
For authorization, you have to vote in addition to the contract for main purse to allow them to change from one plan to another. After you take a vote on the contract, because the contract involves a plan and mean purse changes.
We're gonna if they didn't bring any belts under the car. Big points. But.
Two C to one C.
Two C to one C.
It was minimum.
More cost than that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else? All right. For vote on adopting the agenda as. All right. Sorry.
Okay, two minutes.
You're up.
Two minutes. Um review of the tax anticipation. Um we received, send it out to bid um with an RFP. Um and we received two. Um one, um we had appeared three very interested parties in the beginning, which were Andersgagen Northeast and um Norway Savings Bank. We only received uh two bids at the close of uh bids yesterday. Um and one of them uh was from uh Northeast Bank. Um and the other was from Andersgagen. Northeast uh came in at a rate of five point three one and Andersgagen came in at five point two two. Um neither of them um included any fees for closing. Um the Andersgagen did have a two thousand dollar minimum um of fees um if we don't use that in interest. Um I was assured by multiple uh people uh that uh seeing as the interest amount could be as high as ninety six thousand dollars that we were well within that um within that scope. And believe that that would be. So my recommendation would be um that um unless there's any objection, and I think we have to open it up to the public, um I don't see any public here. Um but um if we do approve the going out to a tan, um I would uh request that we sign off on the documentation uh for Andersgagen at five point two two. They're our current bank, the bank that we do the majority of our business with. Um so it makes sense to uh do this there. Um and the sooner we sign the paperwork and it move in, um we can uh have funds as soon as uh the end of this month, which we have three payrolls in this month and our uh our levels are getting down. Um we're not, we're not crisis level by any means, and we've actually had some really good news. Lisa has um some candy bars on her. You know why you have those?
Yeah.
Yes.
It was paid.
Fifty four.
He's funny outfit. Chocolate.
So, yes, so uh Byron has paid. I'm gonna thank you lots, David Dookie um for helping facilitate that. Um Jeff Campbell um has uh been officially approved by his select board uh to write us a check on the sixteenth for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards their tax. And um as of last week, um I was dealing with a finance person in Rumford. Um and they're gonna do everything they can in order to pay in full, which would be eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars um before um the end of June. All of those things and I've been out there soliciting. Bethel has said no, um that they can't do that right now. They're not in a financial position to do that right now. Um Oxford is still um as uh still negotiating through their process. Um but Adam has said that he'll sit down with me as soon as he knows something. Um so on all of those things, but again, we are gonna need um a portion of this tan. We'll try to keep it at a minimum. Um but I would encourage you to approve that um and also uh accept the bid from uh from Andersgagen.
We have the proposal from uh. Sign it.
Second.
More discussion. Would you look at it?
That's good. It's just, it's two pieces. So you assign the the paperwork from the law firm for the TAM. Fun in there.
The people find.
And we'll have, and we'll have those forms for you at the end of the day here, at the end of the meeting to get get signed.
A separate vote on the TAM itself. Get already.
And I think the uh. Four was in the.
Authorized um requesting proposals for a Dan.
Right. And after we had a public hearing, which is technically what we're doing right now. And so all we showed up to, then I do believe that we do have to sign that um form authorizing that. I'll I'll print out both those forms at the at the. There has to sign.
Yeah.
And with the other one, I think all three have to sign. So.
What do we need a second vote on?
We need a second vote to.
I think you need a vote to that we are going to enter in um for up to four thousand dollars and I'm sorry, four million, four thousand, yeah, right.
That's a lot of work for four thousand dollars. Plus the half.
Four million dollars, whatever the wording was in the public notice, I think should track. Action that puts this all in. Um which is actually.
You have that, Abby?
The legal.
Yeah, pull it up right now.
Yes. To vote on all that.
I will actually, but look at how advanced we are. Look at this. Going to print something. Pull it up right on the screen. So everyone, even the public can see it.
So you have to, I think, adopt the resolution to authorize the borrowing. It's the official action that needs to be taken.
Okay.
So I make a motion. Authorize borrowing up to four million doll. Doing a tax anticipation note.
Right. Motion in the second. Fast. Share for me for the two full time. Full time.
I think we should make a call over to the office and let them know that we're doing that, Abby.
I just wanted to give you all heads up. But.
I was just calling you to see if you want to be over here.
Because you can be commemorative to do. On June seven. You know. If we meet enough with a meeting, then. Six million probably. So again, I'm gonna be out. If it happens to fall at the end of May. Certainly available. I'm happy to attend. Thank you, Lawrence. Very generous.
Hey. Got it? We cleared up. Yeah, cool. Good, good. Um. Just check out boxes. My name. Couple of concerns. And right now, because it puts us over, I understand you looking at it as a strategic.
How does it put us over?
Because. What's the open slot you got?
We just signed.
That took his sign.
Branch took. Before that.
You.
We're not sure who it was, because Grothinger was replaced by Walker and then started with the next one, which was replaced by Kronz. We're not sure where.
What was this at, huh?
Three.
Okay, we're supposed to have twenty.
But the twenty fourth is the UT one.
No, twenty fourth is we also, you you keep forgetting, we have the School Resource Officer. That's that's a full time. That's a separate grant. Afrio is under a grant. That's that's.
But but he's part of the twenty three that we have, that at least that we have counted. We have twenty two and then the twenty third is the.
But he's. There's no.
Union. He's getting.
I know, but we're, he, there's a contract.
So that's what brought us up to twenty three. We were at twenty two and he made the twenty third when we had him. Even I get he's an SRO, but he was count, that's what took us to twenty three.
No, it doesn't count for because he's not patrol. His position is a full time position that they're paying for.
I get that, but then in that.
He's not, he's not patrol. So we have the twenty four spots for. Do you know what I'm saying? So we still haven't filled the technically. Haven't filled the utility one yet, the uh the uh unorganized territory.
So. I I see. Because he's a school resource officer. He's not a patrol deputy.
Doesn't count.
And then if we're gonna do that.
Yeah.
Well, we, the reason we don't count.
Because they're paying for it.
It's a cost, right?
It's a cost.
Cost.
Yeah, yeah. And they just received all the paperwork to apply for it, an extension for that, and they all received it. And it looks like they're gonna uh they're gonna do that.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
And I did receive. They're full time. They're part time and they they don't work during the summer under the for the schools. But this is a full time position. It was a, it was a full time position uh that was under a grant that we did years ago.
When. This wouldn't build.
There.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yeah, okay.
So anyways, we have. Unorganized territory.
So. When they're on your territory.
They all. There first. And our northern patrols.
First. Also we handle. Is that how you look at it?
I don't know how you will get it funding wise, but you know what we have is I have the northern deputy covering the one towns, the majority of the. Right. We also have in our other zones, but we have, this makes, what number is he on our list? No. No, uh if we hire today. It makes how deputies on the list. Do you have, you have the list of your counties?
It would make twenty four, but again, the the twenty third, I get what you're saying, that he's with SRO, but that's what brought up the twenty three, because it used to be twenty two. When we added him, that brought us to twenty three, and I get someone else is paying for it, but we.
Budget. You budgeted for the twenty four spots. We budgeted for the twenty four spots.
But the twenty fourth is from the UT. That's not, so has to be dedicated to the UT. It can't be like, because they already pay a tax bill for like calls to the UT. They have to be dedicated. They can't leave the UT. It's kind of like with Bethel and Mexico and everything. If you have that page, like that it was, I don't know if it's still in the drawer there, but with the others, twenty two deputies, and then there's the twenty third, which is the SRO, and then the twenty fourth, which is the UT, because we used to be in twenty two.
So so our our cap, the the cap that we set.
All and one for the School Resource Officer full time. If we added the UT, that would be another one still that we have not.
Means we would have had a vacancy for like months and months.
We've had vacancies for months and months. Is this, is, so, just to interject, that there's also a detective's position that's. Yes, correct. Is there a detective's position? Yes, we haven't had to fill that too.
Yeah, there is. Yeah, there is. We've all, as we have filled it. And so if through a trip and we needed to do it, we could summon it over there. We just haven't. Fill the detective slot. I did never had a full patrol.
Then we're also at the point in life. Your contract.
And they request. Terrorist outage to.
We are, we are. We're waiting for Matt Terasavich to finish up this contract, and I've given him some ideas, some things that we want to go over. Uh I have asked him to have it done by the fifteenth, so that I can present it on the twentieth um uh to the board uh for approval uh to bring to Mexico um and Dixville and um Bethel uh before we start their contracts this year.
And I also. That I understand where you're coming from, but that doesn't really count to the.
I know, but.
Yeah, exactly. This is. You got this person.
Um. There's. So here you'll have different views on. Just want to drill down a little bit, so I understand. So. On the decision on. At twenty three. In patrol.
Twenty three in patrol is what I budgeted for, plus the school resource is full time makes twenty. We've said we've had an, you've had a. An. They take.
Into the unorganized territory.
And I have.
Investigate each.
And remembering this differently and thinking that.
Um yeah, what I'm going on is based on the, there was like a, it was a picture on the map, that's all the zones, and there was a count on the deputies, because if we have, so and same with the vacancy report that we've been using for a few years now. So there's twenty four, and that includes the UT and includes the SRO person, because we have to include him in that, because he's part of the union, so we're doing budgeting stuff. So according to that, we're not feeling that there's a vacancy. That's just what they're using for HR, so. So you can show, like, again, like, show us where, but every time, at least my reflection last past hires, it's always filling the last slot that was open. And so I just don't see where the current current opening is, but.
So I guess. I don't sure why we're counting the School Resource Officer as a patrol. I understand it's.
The thing is, the cap was at twenty two. We're only counting him because he's now a full time officer. So that brought us to twenty three. With the cap, we're not.
Budgeted for twenty three.
You budgeted for twenty two, because that.
Um I have no idea what was budget. I can't speak for what he put in for budgeting and request. I can only say that that was what the former board had thought, was that there was twenty two deputies, the twentieth, that we had a twenty third was brought on when the SRO came on, because we had to start counting him because um as a full time deputy, because he's a part of the patrol in our.
Right. Okay, so how, it seems like. Needed for patrol. Number we have somewhere accessible, though.
Because what was, it doesn't necessarily mean, yeah, so we can ask.
I understand what you're saying.
So you're off by one for, the chief's gonna go get the seniority list, but you're off by one.
Yeah, that's okay. For the.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just like, you have to just be sure, I mean, like, we're making.
Yeah, it's been confusing over the last, because we've lost some people, we've gained some people, and uh we've hired some people, and I I have lost, I've lost track of where we're at on on the um by one. Um, because I'm thinking that we have one. Still.
Right.
Have one, and I'm thinking that that was um Steinhorst's position, um but again.
Cross filled that, though.
I know that Croft got hired.
Well, yeah, but how, I I'm going back to the School Resource Officer. I I. Extra position on top of what was needed for patrol.
And so then. Yeah, so other than that, we have the twenty two filled then.
No.
No, no, what? That is. So. Tell. Just my, my previous life experiences, and SRO, that's not, he's like.
Like, my note has been correcting the vacancy report for a month, because we haven't had any.
I don't. Out to me to correct it, but I've been through this when David's here. We then like kept correcting. I see, but. Here, plus I have. It's for, so. My full time School Resource Officer's twenty four, and there's still a UT position that we have not. Right. You have not authorized.
So I I think the only, the only difference here at the same, what you're saying is, you, she's saying that there's two on, like, how he, how it's being tracked for HR, that there's twenty two deputy patrol, SRO, and one. The sheriff. This is just one. And.
Or two. Because of the UT, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I'm gonna be the UT's opinion.
And I, and I.
According to the contract, now we'll be open to be able to be done.
Yeah.
Because the deal always was with that. What's.
Right, with the new contract, combining the two, it allows it to happen.
Roll some. Okay, let's wait for the chief deputy to get back.
And so he, though, is doesn't really help. To me, it's more to the point.
Right.
More to the point is, how many old deputies do we have budgeted?
I asked. Three, and the other three. I made my request for the additional three. We budget.
I. And I. But handy.
I don't know if the logic indicates.
Well, I, take a look. So Chris, what is Korea doing right now? The School Resource or Deputy?
No, he's patrol.
Yeah, so. Your intent down the road to backfill and.
To, he he, so.
Wait, we have one.
So, yeah, it's it's not a. In contract.
And. So. There's some on, sometimes or for a while. So.
Alls we have is, is we added this year was a line item uh to, for our School Resource Officer at eighty seven thousand dollars, eighty seven six. Um so that's where I see that there's the change, the um our deputy salary went from um sixteen six one to twenty one oh five, so there was an increase there in deputies um in the deputy scene, but it doesn't, it doesn't break it down to um how many deputies. It just gives us a dollar amount. Um I know, i- it's it's an increase from, like I said, from sixteen six sixty one to twenty one zero five, but um and and just so you know, that doesn't reflect their their pay increase, because their pay increase was figured outside of that.
This is concern. Does this thing into the budget? Mount for the staff in the sheriff's office, would it?
Well, if it was adding an extra guy that we wasn't budgeted for, yes, it does. It adds a, adds another salary. Um I.
Is there a way to cut back through the budget um to find these numbers? Exact numbers, because um we're going off people's.
There's. Line, so you know, it's, it's not, uh the salary line is not something that we can go back through and say this means this number of people, because there's, there's so many different, there's so many different factors there.
Well, then. Those in that.
Right, we did.
So that. Go against the numbers. Troll.
If we had. Have been the School Resource Officer, three on patrol, then I ask. Did I?
Right.
Twenty three plus one is twenty four.
And that's, that, there's me, that, that is.
Yes. Territory is, I now. Authorized to fill that.
Right.
And that.
Comes with a different, comes with.
Yes, from the UT, so. With my. Gives me twenty four. If we do a, an organ. authorize the hiring of that, and at some point, that would be one additional.
Be money to cover. Yeah, I don't mean. I also.
Has not been filled, so that was that. That detective position is one.
Well, the other thing we could do is work back through the numbers a little bit and just check on budgeting on salaries. And either. Or how.
And then if, you know, if we sign. More deputies for, for. Not to speak of names, I do know I have. So. If we needed to, but this is even strategic hire. Put me where I.
I just want to finish my thought. So there, we've two, two options. The finance part. One is to say, okay, we agreed to hire this person now. I, the detective position is essentially gonna be. The higher. And make the decision. In a week. In a week. Right. Is we're gonna meet again, I so it isn't like. Into the world to wait twelve days to find out the the money, but but. Personally, would feel better.
For June first anyway, so it will still be hired, he can still get hired before the start date.
Right, because still, even if we wait twelve days to get hired by June first.
Your hire date is June first.
Or we just the next hour until the chief comes in.
Here we go, uh commission approval.
Yeah, let's do that. So. Forever, he's not working patrol, uh but the authority where he does. Sir, who does handles all the tickets for other agencies already here, so this is just an extension of his. I think this is the well.
Saves us money because we don't have to have a deputy assigned over traffic for he 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 handles all of that for us and really doesn't.
It costs anything.
Laser detectors so they have.
I don't. I can't make the motion.
Okay. He isn't always correct, yes, and what we do is we give him. So that he can.
Sure, so so it's expanding his jurisdiction.
Tickets, certainly, people come in and he's the court officer. It's for us to make them in.
We don't. Yeah, so I I would make the motion.
Yeah. Gary is very generous to do that, so.
I'm gonna get your signature after sheriff on that form for you. I guess their signature's after on that form for you. The commission.
On the commission form, she'll get the signatures, okay.
I'm sorry, sometimes you speak too fast. I think the next thing, if you had it, I don't know.
Yeah, we have the highway safety uh grant uh had um add that on and others, I don't know if we wanna look at that next.
The paperwork on the safety grid.
Yeah, so uh basically we've got a a federal award uh through a sub uh grant contract from the Bureau of Highway Safety. For sixteen thousand two hundred dollars and order to uh put laptops into um twenty uh four vehicles. Um, it's all of the paperwork's been filed, uh we've been approved for the grant. Um, there is some matching funds that we um that we put in. Um, and this was the the original grant that you folks had approved us going out to, it has has been approved. The reason why I bring it up today is I know that we've had discussion in the past in regards to it, um and there is. We do have to have all of the the equipment ordered and installed in the vehicles by. By September first, um so that it it sounds like, hey, we got plenty of time. Um, with the way installing technology goes, we need to be moving on this soon if we're if we're gonna do this. Because they are, one of the things of the grant um that was highlighted for me was that there will be an inspection. Um, to make sure that these are installed in the vehicles that we say that they're going to.
Do you know?
Don't know the manufacturing company.
Oh, made in the US.
They are, we did, we did check. The major was one of those directives was to make sure that these were American-made products, that these were not Chinese products. And I I did just.
Chinese, so we make sure they weren't. Plus the federal grants, they tell us who to purchase.
But we did, but we we did, the major did go over this with them, um and I was assured that it that they were.
What is your pleasure?
Yeah, and you just to keep in mind that and and um is this that this is a. It's something that we're banning, pretty much mandated to do, um with or without the equipment, um we have to do this, this is a way. Um, for us to, we get these printers, um and it it helps us manage the time that it takes us to do what is mandated um by the state.
I think it's our cost is almost twelve thousand.
And that's. And the capital, and if we don't do the grant this year and we're mandated to do it next year, it'll cost us. So possibly twenty-seven thousand more.
What do you need for motion?
I'm motion to approve the um um the acceptance of the sub-grant contract. For the Bureau of Highway Safety.
Motion and second discussion.
Did you not?
Ready.
We wanna talk about the Teamsters Union uh ratification. And do we need to go into executive session to discuss it?
Session.
Motion in second, go better. Alright, do we have a?
That we accept the contract.
Thank you very much. They're talking about that is September, beginning of uh of October is when they like to sit down and have initial initial thing. It'd be very simple, I think, I know, it could be anything more to discuss than just just the wages. Um, in that meantime, we'll give the chance for the other towns to have approved some of their contracts and uh we'll we'll start looking at that.
The next we just make uh the motion for the main pairs then to make sure we can make the main pair switch.
Yep.
And if you're, yeah.
Trying to change. In per. Two C to a one C.
Yes. Refer specifically to that form, is that you would agree to um.
There's a form, I've got one, next one if you need, Lisa.
Oh, here it is, I I thought somewhere else.
Who agreed with the terms in the?
Yes, oh, it happened to the. Alright, I make a. That we change the. For our. The June first. From a.
Second, with the under. Uh, confirm. A special plan one is not a item.
See more on the deputies than it is on us. And we have. Alright, thank much. Reminded me.
I'm sleeping.
Really matter.
Listed, but he's.
Now, the see now that that's combined.
Ron's is going there, the highlighted ones are the one that we're gonna put dropping right now.
Yes, yeah, same number, so. Have uh it is, you know, I. Even for some. Six months. But I I. And I asked for three additions. So. Three positions off the budget, what? There was. Line for the SRO. Yeah, so. So the rest of it is. And I would. Still additional positions that need to be filled, so. We double-checked on it for the next meeting, but we'd have, we'd have the. So and then, like I said, we do have potential for potential that I'd like to. Openings, and then um I do have a deputy, let's know that he's going to be going out on, probably going out in the near future for an extended medical leave. Well. That doesn't count what we're talking about right now.
Yeah.
Separate line to the S.
He understood that there was a separate line for SRO. Difference. Two deputy. Three deputy patrol slots. Position. Separate position. Just wanna kind of drill down into the numbers and a question I think that we can maybe have. Is what? Break down salary, does it look like? If if the four. Voting. Of this hire right now, we found out that it was. Different, you know, the maybe the number.
So this is uh a discrepancy between twenty-two versus twenty-three, is that right?
So. What was the number you? We use exactly what um what the um. So I'd ask you what that. I I know.
Um, yeah, so we um we did two point one million dollars. For uh salaries um and um. You divide that by twenty-three, it's ninety-one thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars uh per uh deputy um. Is is the twenty-three and uh. Two, one, zero, sorry. Divided by twenty-two, it's ninety-five, seven, eighteen. That's just the salary.
Yeah, that exactly would have been.
Yeah, overtime is a separate one.
And then I. We haven't filled that spot, so the money's. And I've still say. Station say that there's still uh additional. Minimum.
Well, I would like. Times question, we asked the patient to present. Twenty as budget to actual on the salary line. OT line separately, so that when we consider. We have real numbers in front of us.
Yeah, no. I can do a budget to actual for the May twentieth meeting without any problem on that one, on that one uh deputies uh salary line without without any problem. Problem that that be. We may be able to get, um well, we're in the middle of an audit right now in our finance department, so I guess I would say that. Probably best to wait for the budget actual for the twentieth, but I can I can get that.
One last question and turns in front of us, I thought I think I heard you tell the chair.
Uh, they already, uh, I think I just wanted to make sure it's all around looking at which line, so. Down. It came on. So. Still have the vacancy that I need to do a lot. Investigations still create another opening. Hope for not finding anyone, and I was gonna tell you. So I think what you're proposing commissioner kind is, I'm just trying to get it straight in my head, and I'm pretty. Two options. From the higher. And in twelve. Under the numbers, and if it's in that budget line, greater. Or the twelve days to get more precise numbers before the decision.
What I was suggesting. Over. Wanna add any, I don't want positions, so my suggestion was. Like the detective position stays open, it can. Numbers, but.
Have to authorize me to fill the opening for detective at that point, so so what we're saying is the same thing, and also. Today. Here today.
I I. Could we have done that when you're somebody from part-time to full-time, I don't recollect.
Been behind, this is still trying to get me back up to step. And me correct if I'm wrong. Authorization you're talking about, we was filled by Crohn's, right?
That's what I'm remembering because I get. Throw guy, we don't count him with the other SROs, we count him in the, at least that's how we've been, we've been tracking it. In the HR stuff, so. They go through the minutes and stuff and determine like when.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, cuz that that is definitely. We would have to consider, so. So what? It's one. And drill down into the numbers and in twelve days at our next meeting, do that, obviously hiring them. Into the numbers so that for. Exact accounting of. How many patrol officers were budgeted? If we find that. One over or. Then fill another.
Correct.
Yeah.
This is all one unit, so we wouldn't allow someone to investigation. I know that we're correct.
There's no doubt that it's that it's budgeted for, it's just a matter of what position is open, but there's no doubt, there's no disagreement about budgetary money.
For just matter.
Probably, yeah.
Should be. Question. When we do a lap. Your decision or do we have to approve your your? For.
So a promotion process.
College is probably.
What, so then if if so, we're this person today. Did an opening in patrol.
That's. If we wouldn't, we need to have. That's why that position has been vacant, we haven't filled it, so no, I. Still had a somewhat over to investigations if we weren't filled on patrol.
And if you did that, it would create the position for the, if say there was a person that was on patrol that was hired to, as an extra, say we're saying that this person was an extra outside over here and they did that, well, it would open up the position. So that person would dump into wherever that person that got promoted to detective would leave, that guy would, if he was, if he wasn't. Would go in this, we either, he would go into Detective Bureau or he would fill the position of the person. But if that's clear as mud.
So at the very least, we're all agreeing that I have budget for this position, it's just a matter of where it goes, I'm still, I'm still of the sense that I still have more positions that haven't been filled than.
And I, I, again, I can take a look at the budget, I, I was here at the budget process, I don't ever, and and this was my first budget process, so I don't ever remember that we need. I dealt with a number, not necessarily a number of positions, like we said, we are going to fund this. For two one, two point one million dollars, because and a lot of that conversation comes because last year. And again, I get to the sheriff's budget here, is is that how we set that number is, okay, last year we overspent, so this year we don't want to overspend, so what do we need a budget for that? I don't remember it ever being a conversation about specific numbers, but that being said, this was my first time at this, at this crack, because again, last year. We budgeted. One point six, we were on track to overspend, so therefore we went with two point one, what that exact, how we came to that calculation.
So so I just suggest on our next meeting, you maybe work. Whatever. Drill. Number. We budget. Really, and I. Did. Time, like, because positions are really what we're talking. So let's. I. Years and that might just shift.
And again, we'll look at the budget actual on the numbers and I haven't been alerted by Lindsay as if we are running into a problem, like if we're more than the percentage that we're into the thing, then Lindsay lets me know, she hasn't let me know about this number, it'll be interesting to see what that number is, we're out on it and make sure that we're, again, living within our expenses and in, within our budget. We have, you know, we're looking to the futures, if we do have to add four people for Mexico, what that's going to do to our budget, and I had some concerns about that, so I've been working on some numbers associated with that, so.
This will. Extra budget much.
But, yes, we are.
Yeah. Yes, it does affect the budget, but we're being, there's an inflow to.
Right, because some of the things that we use are. Paid out are. Five years.
Yeah.
The, the, we have to pay upfront, but they're paid out over five years because they're scheduled payout on that, so when that's one, it's not that much, when it's five. Then it becomes.
Right.
A significant portion.
And I thought we were going to as a contract ask. So we are.
So. Pretty just the motion that you made in, as you described it in terms of authorizing. In getting the budget to act.
Yeah, and I can make that again, because we. Typically this. I would make the motion for hiring Joseph Carrera. Time to full time beginning June. The wage. With the wage of twenty nine forty two and. Contingent, so and and that in addition. Of a position. You will create one if we need to.
Yes, and instead of doing the wage rate at twenty nine forty two.
Yes.
Can you do at the ten year mark, which is next one, because we just changed the contract and this number at twenty nine forty two is for.
So, oh, so that.
Motion. Those who pick. All right. Clarification. Budgeted. I think you could. Why? Back with the number, yeah. You know that we said. The additional number, what would cost for the commission has decided. But we still have. My position is I still have at least one more position budgeted, whether it be through the, the, I don't know, nice territory or not, so I think we're still. One more opening with my.
Also. Back in the meetings and see. You. The vision.
Yeah, and like I'd say, it's like you did go back to each one every time someone's resigned in the last year, you know, last six months, because we were, I feel like we're behind and that's part of. Having openings, we've had these openings that we haven't filled.
And that's the city of your problems that we have is. Translations hiring, more so than in any other department and large numbers, so we'll, we're getting taken care of, we'll get the verification done and we'll be back to you on the plane.
Long. And I know we've, the math, we've done it before with the previous. Mission, and I usually, I'm usually right.
Got the commission, we got the purse, we got the contract. The full time deputy, thanks, Sheriff, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Not able to make it today, but. The department head, he prepped me really, really well to talk about the two UT items and I see where seven minutes.
Just, I think you were. Little control officer.
Okay. So this. So. Yeah, so would you want to start with the plane crash?
Sure.
Uh, news first. Is this, please, the next few days, weeks, whatever you have time, please go down and view the airport. They have just completed the paving down there. It's just beautiful, it is, as several people would say, it's a diamond in the rough. The way he's laid this out and the thought process that Tony's put into this is just absolutely awesome. He's made it so that easily can be constructed hangers to go in there, thus, again, acquiring money for us, rentals for us and things like that to have that happen, so it's really great progress, it's taken, you know, four or five years for us to get here to this point and just look, and I went down last night and with Tanya and looked at the pavement down there and just, it just changes the whole, it just, it's really, it's, it's wonderful. So that being said, prior to that, we at Cessna one seventy two. Get caught in a wind shear and it flipped the plane over. This was a private airplane that is housed at the, there, it was a person that was in the process of learning to fly, but the person in control of the plane at the time was the instructor and that was through Moser, Moser Aviation. They went off runway one five and when they hit the grass, the landing gear came off and the plane ended, ended upside down, there was a. A prop strike which basically totaled the airplane, there was no injuries, however, and the reports were made to the FAA and TSB, the Traffic Safety Board, and we were in compliance with all of our reporting on that. And the insurance person is due down at some point, there was no damage to our property and it was not anything to do with any defective part of the, of the airport that caused this, it was a wind shear issue that was predicted by the instructor and that's why he was in control of landing the plane, not, not, not the, and still even with his knowing what was coming was not enough to avert the accident.
If the. Thing of the. By the owner's insurance.
Child insurance, yes.
Yep. We assume no risk. Ability for the.
No, thank you.
And it is, is Tony there?
Is out of medical appointment today or else he would be here, he is going to be later on today and I do believe that he said to me that he would be around.
Okay.
Tony, when he says he's going to be around. He could, he could be at South Arm Road and. Surplus, he could be down at the, down at the airport. Then under the second one, so. You folks authorized us to talk last meeting to talk with Brandon Holmes in regards to an ACO contract, basically a per vium thing where we would give him a fifteen hundred dollar retainer and then he would charge thirty five dollars an hour in mileage when responding to ACO complaints. In the unorganized territory, however, in the discussion, Brandon does not, and, and in his original quote, did not account for liability insurance. He assumed that we were going to take the liability insurance on this and we've learned from issues in the past that we can't do that other than hire them as employees, but at this time, I, I didn't want to do that, so I encouraged Brandon to get a liability insurance bond for us that would cover us in this, in which case he found one for one point five million dollars. At the, which will, which is very, it was, it was what. Acquired of him in order to provide, he provided all, Tony actually helped him and provided any necessary information to the insurance company for this, so the total cost of that. Uh, will be six hundred and eighteen dollars. He has basically amended his thing to put that in there, because that's a direct cost to him, so we would go from giving him a, a deposit of fifteen hundred to giving him a deposit of twenty one eighteen, which would include that six hundred and eighteen dollars in there and then he could, he would agree to start with us. I think that this. Would be a great opportunity for us, my previous administrator was working on and looking for a, in county run. Control officer, not just for the UT, but throughout the county, to be able for us to supply that to some of the towns, you know, again, at a cost, but to be able for us to do that, and this gentleman looks like, should he get through this phase, would be a great candidate for something with that, and we, I would look to budget for that next year, because he would need some, we would take him over as an employee, but he already has. Buckfield, Sumner, Stoneville, and West Paris and Hartford, which would all need coverage. We could keep going on, it was something that the previous commissioners board and the previous administrator had worked actually. Significantly on finding somebody like this and we're unable to, and that's why they never went to budget and never, Tim, you were, you were present during that time and never went to budget for that, but.
Come.
Yes, the notes I had read from, from, from what Donnie. Was that they were looking for somebody to be that ACO where we could get an income stream coming in, he would also cover our own, this territory, but that we would charge these towns, but again, contract, leaving him out of the contract, I'm good with that.
I. Think it is his full time position.
Oh, does it sound?
Well, yeah. Little car guy.
It's just the signatures.
Oh, signatures, yeah, you're, you're just not sitting in the right place.
Yeah. Comments from the.
Yeah, and just I know other, other counties out there. Franklin. Anderson. Struggling. To find ACOs, to have people and a lot of their municipalities have come to the county saying, can you help us out with this, and it is one of the things you'll hear with, at the MCCA meetings and other meetings that lots of counties are struggling with this, so this is, this person is a great find for us, and if we can, at whatever level we can retain him, we certainly would be beneficial for our county. Vote to approve that updated amount, the, I will make that offer to him. Yes, so this is his proposal to me, so I don't know all the math behind there, but he does have a significant. Possess for coming up with these numbers, to be fair, because he's, he's, he knows that there's more traveling for us, but then also that he's got a little bit different of a contract, but he is the one that actually has come up with these percentages and these, and these numbers, because this is looking at his overall, his overall budget.
Sounds. His contract.
So this amount that we would pay him would, which would be the fifteen hundred dollars plus the six eighteen for liability insurance would come directly out of our UT budget and the other towns are responsible for their, for their amounts. They pay directly.
So when they. Paying the live. For.
Paying him as an employee.
They're paying him as an employee.
And that a very big. That's a very big risk for them.
A lot of. Having him as an employee, okay.
Well, so what they do it is they do it like that, because then they can, they can cover him with their, their liability insurance, if he's determined to be an outside contractor and they're doing that, then their insurance company will find them big time. Well, so what they do it is they do it like that, because then they can, they can cover him with their their liability insurance, if he's determined to be an outside contractor and they're doing that, then their insurance company will find them big time, and that'll only come out when that incident happens, that there's liability, so I strongly recommend against us not doing what they're doing.
You just find every year because they do a payroll audit and they'll see that, yeah, or because he'll get ten ninety-nine if he wasn't unemployed.
Yeah.
So I would make a motion that we, uh. Retain. In homes at, uh, this amended. Um, retainer rate. For ACL.
Okay. Give me a second. Those. Anything else? Okay. The second to adjourn is one.
Yep, I got it.
We didn't work to sign.
We are going to pass that right now.